Well, we plugged in here real quick. Normally my May financial report surprises me talking about how we just got a bunch of tax money and instead we're gonna talk about how no one's even had billed for the property taxes yet. Uh, Jared, please. Like I said, I'm gonna get an update on our property tax revenue situation that we have with Champagne, Kansas. Uh, start off by saying that fifty-three percent of our total revenue comes from local property taxes. We've talked about that statistic several times and, uh, of course, the majority of the rest of our revenue comes from state, uh, state funding and federal funding, but again, the majority there, uh, comes from local property taxes. And historically, we received about, you know, in May and June, about fifty-five percent of our annual, uh, property tax revenue from Champagne, Kansas. It's kind of coming off of a long period of low, uh, of our lowest cash flow, so it's been from like January to April. And we're kind of waiting for that way to come in in May and June. And it has been consistent, certainly as long as I've been here, uh, well before then, uh, historically. Normally because those bills are mailed out May first. And, uh, so this year, the county claimed that there's a multiplier they're waiting on from the state. And now they have that, so they said originally that the bills are gonna be mailed on May twentieth. And, uh, latest article from these, that said, said May twenty-eighth. So we're a solid month late, which means we'll, uh, those bills will do June twenty-eighth. We were, like I said, we normally receive two big payments in May and June. Let's say just say we won't see a May payment this year. And we've got a few slides to talk about, kind of what the impact, the impact of that is for us with our cash flow. That kind of puts into perspective there for that period really, we see in December through April. Again, during that time, we're still seeing state funding coming in consistently, two payments each month. It's interesting that it's now flipped, where state funding was always the one that we're waiting on. Uh, and now, in this year anyway, uh, the property tax revenue that we'll be waiting on. So you see the, uh, the lion's share of the revenue there in May and June, about eight point nine million dollars. We don't know how much of that we will be receiving this fiscal year. Our fiscal year ends in June thirty. And, uh, of course, so cash flow in April, um, some financial report you have in front of you in your board packet is usually the ugliest bump we have. Uh, if we now get through May without the four point seven, four five million dollars, it won't look much better. So, uh, if we look at some specifics with the projections for our bills, our bank balance as of today, two point seven million dollars, uh, with four hundred eight thousand dollars in outstanding checks as of today. Uh, the bill list that was approved earlier in the meeting, uh, had a total of eight hundred seventy-five thousand nine fifty-one. So it gives kind of dwindling down the balance there. May twenty-third, like I said before the previous slide, we'll receive that evidence-based, should be EBM, evidence-based funding model, the state fund, uh, the state funding payment, uh, four fifty-one. And then we'll get through May thirtieth payroll. Uh, at the most throughout this year, it's been six hundred thousand every two weeks. So that's the number I use just to be conservative, along with its related, uh, payroll accounts payable. So paying offline, it's paying all the vendors for the payroll-related accounts payable. So by the end of May, we'll have made six hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. And again, that would otherwise be that plus four point seven million dollars, quite a bit of difference. Uh, if we look into June, then we get that, uh, evidence-based funding state payment, June twelfth. And then we get another payroll that happens to be an early one this year. It's, it's June fourteenth, since that's a Friday, and then we have the associated payroll A P for that. So that shows we'll make it through June fifteenth payroll. Then we get that additional state payment, not additional, but the planning state payment, the final one for the fiscal year, toward the end of June. And then we get to that bill list, June twenty-fourth, uh, eight hundred seventy-five thousand. That will be, it's probably a high number compared to what it's going to be, but again, just in the interest of being conservative, that's the point where we go negative, I mean, negative in the bank balance, but that's when we run out of money, so it's good. Again, at that point, if we wouldn't have received any private tax revenue or almost nine million dollars that we didn't receive, I don't know of any public school district that can operate, that cannot operate on, you know, and not receive those, those types of funds. That's nothing anybody can plan for. That's been consistent money for decades and, uh, it'll, it'll show up still, it'll show up probably in July, next, next fiscal year. But what that means in terms of trying to pay bills essentially, uh, we get into the discussion of tax anticipation warrants. And I cited the school code portion of, uh, that discusses tax anticipation warrants. It's simply, it's essentially funds that you can receive locally in lieu, from banks, in, in lieu of receiving those private tax, uh, payments. And then you, with a low interest rate, short-term maturity date, usually a month or two. And then when you receive the tax money, uh, then you pay the, those warrants back. You can, you can, I guess, borrow, uh, up to eighty-five percent of the total without these levy. That would be more than enough, of course, to pay those, those bills that will have coming around the corner. Make, uh, point two, they would be provided from a local bank. So usually school districts get multiple quotes from banks, uh, of course, stay local and, uh, low-利率 rate. And Chad, you want to turn that around? I'm sorry?
How quickly can you get that?
Can we get?
I mean, do they get it next day or?
Uh, I think it's usually about a week process, so we'll get into that a little bit here with the next board call. And speaking with, of course, this is never been anything we've ever talked about, we've never had to. And I've been talking with Chad and the color are asserting on these, these types of topics. Uh, parameters resolution can be approved by the board in a special meeting the first week of June. So that would allow, would, uh, it would designate, uh, school district administration, one thing myself, and then the board president to, uh, issue those warrants as needed throughout the rest of the month, within parameters, hence the main framework resolution. So up to X dollar amount, up to X percentage, you know, interest rate, and then X maturity date as well. So kind of those three main factors that would be written within that parameters resolution that would give us some, uh, parameters to work within to discuss or banks. And then, like I said, pay that the next day, or the next month rather. The latest I heard from the county would be that as soon as they're planning, they either get money, they're gonna try to get that right back out to us. Where would you receive that direct deposit? So, you know, here's hoping that, that continues. But we don't know with the amount and the length, which is the biggest business information you need to pay bills. So, uh, again, very unusual, of course, everybody in the room that, that owns a property hasn't seen those bills yet and, and, uh, so here's, here's why. And it's, it's been covered quite a bit in this, but last few weeks, so none of this is surprising, but, uh, it does have a huge impact on public schools and other taxing bodies.
It's not, it's not a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
So I can hear it tell you it's not, it's not realistic transactions, including my own.
So what was the multiplier? Was it?
It was given a point zero zero, like it's been for the last fifteen years.
So we waited until, uh, so the, the word for the county was the state didn't give us a multiplier.
Right. Other counties received it.
But other counties received their multipliers. Because we're the only county I know of that's having this.
I've talked to part of the colors and they're on the same boat.
What? So you just said this, and I'm gonna ask it again, because I wanted to answer that you can't give me that. The clerk's office has to give it. So they had given you no, I mean, could we slip into July and be in the same boat? Could we slip into August and be in the same boat? I mean?
July maybe, August unlikely, even July, I'd like to think unlikely. I mean, again, now this is the fourth kind of hard question again. Now that we keep pushing back on those bills, we're planning to move them out.
Yeah, but the problem is information keeps changing, right? As of a week ago, you were told they were gonna be mailed out after that, and they swore by it.
Three days later, yeah, four days later they got it.
Four days later, they changed it. But I think the point is once the bills get mailed, cash will start to flow in, because there are some people who pay their taxes right away.
They do, it's a, they're out there.
So they're gonna bail them on with mortgage, right?
I'm just saying that there's a lot of money to us to get it.
Correct.
So.
So I'm hoping, you know, I'm hoping maybe June thirteenth, we get a, a direct deposit come through, and then again, June twenty-eighth, or not sooner. That is what they have said, they'd like to do two payments, you get one of them, one of the banks distributors, they get that as much they have as of that meeting.
Do you expect any of that four hundred fifty-one thousand E B F to be addressed on time?
Absolutely not. That's been consistent for the last two years, on the twelfth and the twenty-third.
But so was the one percent for, I will maintain that, it's consistently one percent for all those.
Oh, yeah, that year.
So the plan will for sure, not for sure, but the timing will be that you will not miss any payroll, any.
I mean, with what I have in front of me right now, yeah. And a lot of those assumptions are pretty conservative, you know, using higher numbers, they're the highest we've had throughout the year, payroll, you know, AP, there's, they're pretty high. It's the best, best I've seen.
That's the approach to these banks? Have we given some thought to thinking worst-case scenario and talking to them about July and August? And what they would do to help us out if it seems like there's a process that we have to go through that's a week or two? Might the move us to just plan out worst-case scenario, so that we don't find ourselves having to have special meetings in July and August as well, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, an alternative would be also to, I guess, that June, I kind of want to, I guess, the parameters resolution to be anything it needs to be, but
Okay.
I don't know if I would suggest including July and August, but I, I don't think that would be likely.
I don't think it would be likely, but there's a way. I think the actual tax bills actually go off the map.
Right, it'll go better, yeah, once we see them, once we see this.
Once the bills are off.
And their payments aren't dependent on them actually receiving those bills back, correct?
Yes.
Payments back.
And then direct positive to, uh, how much are your taxes and interest to issue these warrants? That's a good question, I don't think it would be very much. I mean, I, when we started talking, talking about tax anticipation warrants, I wasn't even sure of the first step. Fortunately, we haven't had to do that, but, uh, the first was the last time we had. I tried to go back and do that, couldn't find.
I wonder what you're, what we did. So that's a free general time, like, you know, we see twenty years ago.
So in terms of longer-term planning, uh, by the way, thanks for the red flyer report, that's a very helpful organization data for minorities. You can see a clear trend about days of cash on hand, and it seems like, I mean, the, the trend is going down. And, and right now, we have seventeen days, I think, of cash on hand. Do you think that the board should be reevaluating how much days of cash on hand we maintain?
You can reevaluate, but it will, I mean, it would require some tough choices, obviously, I'll be honest with you. We've been keeping that tax rate level for the last twenty-two, twenty-five years.
Right.
It would require a tax increase. It may require not adding teachers when we need to add teachers. So, and that's, that's a way to have fun balance if you need to.
But, so, I just want to make sure I understand if, if we had higher get days of cash on hand, it wouldn't necessarily be as likely to be more, you got the warrants in this case. I mean, like you said, it's extremely rare to be wishy-washy.
Sure.
But it's.
I would invite you to look at the rest of the square area too. I mean, to look at April specifically is, like I said, the worst month to look at for one. And it's low that way for all the counties and across the district.
Well, but, and see, what's nice about this report is you show us April for the previous years, and, uh, in April sixteen and fourteen, we have thirty-three and forty-nine days of cash on hand.
I would warn you to also consider though that state funding in the last five years has been incredibly, incredibly, incredibly inconsistent.
And if that the reason for the difference has been?
That's one of the, one of the reasons, sure, absolutely. So I would invite any of those who haven't had a financial discussion with me to come in and chat and we can talk about the new offices.
What you're saying is that expenses are, we, state revenues are not.
Right, but this is a case study for why, like, is being recommended a higher day of cash on hand?
But it's an opportunity cost issue too, right?
Sure, oh, yeah.
Pointing out that, like, we have to balance out a hundred eighty versus a teacher, or a hundred eighty versus, but.
Or raise the tax rate.
Right, I mean, it's, it's all opportunity cost, but.
At the day, at the time, he's always worked for us.
If we could do it, but more would be better, but.
Nineties more realistic for us, we're under, we're inherently underfunded with our tax rate. Uh, inherently underfunded, as proven by evidence-based funding model with the state funding. That's two heads on my ticket, it's revenue, so, um, it would take some drastic moves to change. Any questions for Charlie? I can leave.
(Crying) United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Stay right there, I'm gonna get your picture here.
Yeah. Board members can stand and smile.
All right, now it's official.
Okay. We're glad to have the Lincoln Trail of Youth Leadership Club here tonight. They are going to be back in a little while, but start of meetings. Stay tuned for more. Uh, board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the agenda. This time I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda. If I should do that, somebody. Jeremy, is there a second?
Second.
Glory, discussion on the agenda?
Um, can you add a discussion item for long-term facilities planning?
Typically, what we like to do is have those in ahead of time, so we can talk about that and be prepared. So we can add that maybe to next month.
I thought we could add it at the start of meetings, that, that's why.
Typically, we typically have not, no.
Okay, if you vote for next month.
June twenty-fourth?
Yeah. But if you get those to us right before the agenda comes out, and then you're.
Is this the correct time to talk about order of the agenda? The, uh, the handbook has the new prices for the, the lunch, and we're including the handbook before the prices. I didn't know if we want to rearrange that order, make sure that we're not out of sync.
We certainly can, we can, we can do that, and we can also edit the handbook if the lunch prices are not approved.
Okay.
Also, we're voting on the surplus items of the science book, will fall be approved as a science book, so seems that we should move that surplus to after the U D S.
Um, we can talk about that when we get consent agenda. All in favor of booting the agenda, say aye. Uh, opposed? All right, now consent agenda. The consent agenda includes several items, minutes, bills, treasury report, personnel changes, record management, new activity in the county high school, and surplus items. Would anyone like to remove any of those from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Yes.
Okay, and that would be the science books?
Um, I actually have a few of them. Um, I'd like to remove the minutes. For the personnel changes, um, I think we need to at least remove the people that we vote on later on, because otherwise, we vote them in in the consent agenda before we vote them in under new business. So that would be Dustin Day, Marissa Hill, and Chad Benedict. The records management, I also have to pull. And the surplus items.
Those you want to pull, that's personnel changes, records management, and surplus items.
Yes.
That would leave the consent agenda, the bills, treasury report, and new activity at the high school.
Correct.
Okay? What the record reflects, consent agenda is modified to include those four items. There's a motion to approve that as presented.
Will we have discussion on that?
Yes.
So.
To the second.
Second?
Discussion.
Yes, my understanding as a board member and a community member is that we put the minutes in the board package and the agenda out on Friday at four o'clock. We have questions or concerns with it, we bring it so that we can know ahead of time, so that if there are questions or concerns, that we can do our due diligence for the community and know what concerns ahead of time. I think it's kind of just bad practice to bring them out at seven oh six when we've known what the agenda was. It's Friday at four o'clock, like the whole community.
I'm, I'm just simply saying that I think that some of these warrants are in discussion. We just had a meeting, um, before this, that I think brings the minutes discussion and requires that to be necessary.
That's called discussion, that shouldn't be.
That's part of what we're voting on, though.
I can't vote on consent agenda items if we don't have the time to, the opportunity to discuss those.
According to Robert's rules, right, pulling these out of the consent agenda is not even voting, right? If someone pulls it out, it's out.
It's out, right?
So we'll just, the, the discussion here is on the bills and treasures and voting on the cap, right? So we're just voting whether we want to.
Once someone, once someone wants to remove something, just remove it. Under Robert's rules. So from that point, there's a discussion on the items that are left.
Which?
Which should we start with?
But altogether, right? We just vote on consent agenda. Do we approve those three things?
Motion on the table is to approve the bills, the treasury report, and the surplus, or the, I'm sorry, the new activity fund of the high school. Is there any discussion on those items?
I'm sorry, Max, will you say what's left in?
Bills, treasures report, new activity fund of the high school.
Uh, are we gonna talk about what the issues are with these things?
I'm asking, is there any discussion on those?
We're just voting on what's left of the consent agenda.
Okay, all, is, you've got a motion or second on those items? All in favor of approving those items, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, we gotta get on the roll, Paul, go ahead.
Tennessee? Yes. Schultz? Yes. Keith?
Yes.
Giles?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Larson? Yes. McComb?
Well, let's go back to the items we did not include in the consent agenda. And that were asked to be removed.
Oh, yes.
Okay, minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
We can't have any discussion until we have a, a second, so, so move.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the minutes.
Uh, I believe that the Open Meetings Act won't allow us to approve the closed session minutes that are, uh, included in the board packet, because the summaries stated there are insufficient. For example, if you look at April first, um, there was a closed session meeting where there was discussion for about fifty-seven minutes, and the summary is four words long. There needs to be a substantial, um, summary that explains what is discussed and what is set, uh, just like you would see in the open, um, meeting minutes. That's, that's my objection to.
So the objection is that some of the minutes are not as complete as this.
Right, right. I, I believe we'd be in violation of the Open Meetings Act if we approved them tonight.
What part of the Open Meetings Act?
There's a part of the Open Meetings Act, um, I can find the exact spot, but it, it basically says that at the, the second subsequent meeting, you have to vote to approve minutes. And those minutes have to contain certain information like who was present, um, what were the times that the meetings took place? And then the last thing is a summary of the discussion. Uh, and that summary needs to be more than just a, a, a bullet list of a few items.
For which the Open Meetings Act, does it have to detail it in the summary?
Which is it? You said four words and then you said bullet list, so it's a bullet list?
It's a bullet list.
I just, it's an open meeting, like training last week.
Yeah, it's a bullet.
So I can read to you what I've just passed. Public bodies are required by OMA to keep minutes of all meetings, whether the meetings are open or closed to the public. Minutes must include at a minimum the time, date, and place of the meeting, a record of whether each body is, member of the body is present or absent, and if present, whether physically present, present by video, or audio conference, and a summary of the discussion of all matters proposed, deliberated, or decided in a record post taken. The summary of discussion in minutes must include sufficient data, so either the public body or a court examining its minutes will be able to ascertain what in fact was discussed, the substance of that discussion, and what, if any, actions.
What's that training from?
So that is from Attorney General Kwame Rauwo.
So I took, because that's what the board members have to do, I took the I A S B's board training, and it said something similar, but it was a different word, you know, I'm just curious where you got that one from.
Okay.
My objection to minutes is that I was not a board member on April first and did not attend the full April first minute meeting. So I don't feel comfortable voting for minutes for a meeting for which I was not.
And that was mine, I was wanting to abstain, I didn't feel like I could vote on meeting minutes where I wasn't present with the, the.
You're allowed to abstain.
I can see.
Well, when it's in the consent agenda.
No, but just so you know, in the future.
I understand that, but you can't abstain from just a section of the consent agenda unless you pull it out. And that was my purpose for pulling it out. I didn't want to abstain from the entire vote. I just wanted to be able to abstain from a particular section of the agenda that I didn't feel was appropriate.
So my concern is just trying to protect the district from liabilities. Uh, we would be subject to liability if we're violating the Open Meetings Act. Uh, I would move that we table this approval for the next meeting. And, um, the, the nice thing is, I know that there are notes, um, that are taken for each of closed session meetings. Uh, I would also include in my motion that we use those notes that already exist uh, to replace the, the section about what the board discussed in closed session. Um, and, and we'll come back to that for the next meeting. I think we're still within the, the.
They're voting for two, we're giving.
Right, so we're still within the time, time span.
So we've got a revotion to table the minutes for the next meeting.
And replace the contents of the discussion with the notes that are already in existence for.
Those are two separate motions, though.
Okay. I think it could be one motion. What can you do as to?
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Further discussion?
Well, I guess I would wanna, you know, if there's more discussion to be had, I just, I think there needs to be a legal opinion on what we need to have in closed session minutes.
I agree, there ought to be a process on how it gets.
If we decide and vote today and replace some minutes with some other summary of minutes, you know, that we go up handedly on that before we do it.
Okay, I agree with my motion to remove that part, so I, my motion is simply just to table the, the approval for the next meeting.
Second. Maybe was that you second? Yes.
So we will cable it, we'll do a legal amendment. It needs to come back up the agenda next month as a, not under the consent agenda. Because we still have two board members who want to extend.
Right, or. At least from, it depends on which, right, I mean, which, unless we talk about the minutes individually, there's just, I mean, it's just hard to prove minutes that I wasn't here here.
I need, hey, a roll call, Paul, I'm, yeah?
Hendricks?
Yes.
Tennessee? Yes. Schultz? Yes. Larson? Yes. Giles?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
McComb?
Sure. Okay, personnel changes.
I think we should just call the three that we're gonna talk about later in the meeting.
So the motion is to approve the personnel changes, that's per kind of the exception of the three that, uh, which will be voted on individually later in the meeting. So the second is out?
Second.
Perfect, further discussion?
So to be clear, who are the three that were thrown out?
Two, three, and four.
It's just the new business items of Dustin Day, Marissa Hill, and Chad Benedict. It's just because if we're gonna have any discussion, we've kind of already voted, I mean, it seems procedurally out of order to vote on something and then vote on it a second time, and not have the opportunity to have that.
Any other discussion? Roll call, Paul, is.
Schultz?
Yes.
Giles?
Yes.
Larson? Yes. Keith?
Yes.
Tennessee? Yes. Hendricks? McComb?
Yes.
Record management, what was that?
I think that's talking about getting rid of some recordings, correct? We're gonna vote on getting rid of closed session recordings. And I'd like to table that discussion. I think at this point in time, we need to be hanging on to those closed session recordings. There's no real reason that we need to, um, to get rid of those. And I think we've got some, um, legal reasons to keep those, and it's in the best interest of the district that we just choose to table that and keep that for this point in time.
Dr. Hall, what's been our practice?
Uh, to dispose of recordings greater than eighteen months.
What's the motivation to destroy them?
It's been in practice here for, I don't know, a year and a half.
Okay.
And again.
Um, so I had a chance to review the recordings and the minutes, uh, before the meeting, and they suffer from the same problems that the minutes for the previous closed sessions do. There's, um, one or two words summarizing forty-five minutes of discussion. So I don't think we can, because the, the concept of the Open Meetings Act is like, uh, Colleen read, once you destroy those recorded recordings, there's no way to recover what was discussed at those meetings.
You said recordings though, you're saying the recordings only had a little bit of wording in?
No, the, the minutes only had a few words describing the discussion and the recordings were forty-five minutes long.
But the minutes are supposed to serve in place of the audio recordings. And then when I was listening to some of those, the minutes are actually incorrect. So what was on the recording is not actually accurately reflected in even just the bullet points of the minutes. I think if we're gonna go through the step of actually deleting those recordings, we have some housekeeping to do and make sure that they're accurate, that we're protecting the district from any liabilities of getting rid of information. And in the digital age, we had, you know, big machines or tape that we had to keep. I would understand that, but I don't think it's a storage issue. So I think right now, um, the safest thing to protect the district is to make sure that we do a little, um, records cleanup.
For the recommendation, we table that. Can we get an opinion on that from our chair?
Sure.
Okay, surplus items.
Who can vote on table?
Who can vote on table?
Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion to table?
Second.
Second?
I'll say.
Further discussion? Roll call votes.
Keith?
Yes.
Larson? Yes. Hennessy? Yes. Hendricks?
Yes.
Schultz? Yes. Giles?
Yes.
McComb?
Surplus items.
Um, I pulled that because I don't really wanna vote on getting rid of the old science textbooks until we have an opportunity to talk through the new textbooks and make sure that we have something in place before we, it just seems, again, procedurally out of order to vote, to get rid of resources before we have resources.
Just bring that back next month?
Sure. Is that what we're doing, with most of the things?
You could even just move it down.
Yeah.
Hey, you wanna bring it back next month, I'm gonna move to thirteen on the agenda, so we'll move to thirteen on the agenda. Or fourteen, fifteen? Okay. That takes us to the consent agenda items. One thing we did do under personnel changes is we did hire some new folks for next year. Dr. Romo's here, tell us about some of the folks that are hired.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's that time of year where we start introducing our new staff for next full year. So I'm gonna start and then we'll have a group interview, start our new special ed staff, that'll be joining us. So with us tonight, we have Kelsey News, she grew up in moments Illinois. She graduated from Blackburn College in twenty-twelve with a BA in secondary English education. She's taught the last six years in Danville, um, teaching high school English and some college and career readiness courses. Her favorite part of teachings are those moments in which she connects directly with the student in her classroom. So aside from teaching, she enjoys playing video games and board games, I see a way of connecting with her kids there, uh, reading, writing, theater, and camping with her family. She's eager to continue her career in Mohammed, so I'd like to welcome her to the high school in the fall. Did you?
Welcome, sir.
I've got married to you. Caroline? I put my glasses far away. Really excited to introduce Caroline Hopper. Caroline grew up in Sevoy, Illinois, and just recently graduated from the, from Illinois State University in May with her bachelor's science degree in, in education, special education. Uh, this past year, she spent the majority of her time in Dugan, Illinois, completing her final student teaching clinicals. She spent the fall semester at Hope Academy, where she taught kindergarten through third grade students in a cross-categorical setting. She finished the remainder of her senior year during spring semester at Eisenhower High School, teaching in a self-contained social-emotional classroom. Currently Caroline lives in Sevoy, Illinois, she enjoys spending free time with her boyfriend, her family, and her friends. She especially enjoys spending time with and walking her family's pet, old dog, no coincidence. Uh, and his name happens to be Steve. Uh, Caroline is so excited about joining the Mohammed Seymour School District and to start her teaching career. She will also be the head junior high cheerleading coach and looks forward to working with students in the classroom and in the gymnastics hall, so welcome Caroline. Nice classes. Welcome Caroline. Thank you. Samantha, there you are.
This is Samantha Saban. Samantha grew up in Moreland Park, she graduated from the University of Illinois in two thousand and fifteen with a bachelor's degree in special education and is currently working on her master's degree in administration. She's spent the past four years teaching students with mild to severe disabilities at the middle and high school levels in Urbana. Currently Samantha lives in Champaign with her two dogs. She enjoys spending time with family, cooking, and staying active through yoga and outdoor activities. She is excited about joining the Mohammed Seymour School District and is looking forward to working with students and staff in the fall. Welcome. I should say that both Caroline and Samantha will be at the junior high next year. Rachel? Rachel will be our new social worker at the high school next year. Uh, Rachel Simmons grew up in Champaign, Illinois, she graduated from Eastern Illinois University in two thousand and four with a bachelor's of arts in sociology and psychology, and then went on to earn her master's degree in social work at the University of Illinois of Champaign in two thousand and six. She spent the past thirteen years as a social worker with middle and high school aged students. Rachel is moving to Mohammed in May, along with her husband Robert and two children, Catherine, who is eleven, and Jacob, who is nine, and their ten-month-old husky named Sophie. So cute. Uh, she enjoys spending time with her family, reading, going to coffee, and walk, and on walking dates with her friends. Rachel is honored and excited to join the Mohammed Seymour School District and is looking forward to working with students, their families, and staff in the fall. Welcome Rachel.
Okay, so new staff that was introduced, you are welcome to stay and stick around and join us for the remainder of the proceedings, already made choose to leave. Remarkably, if you follow in and try and move normally. Uh, next is donations.
We have two donations this month, both to our Atlas program. Sixty dollars in cash from Witherson's Creations and sixty dollars in cash from Matthew and Jennifer Walker for the twelve hundred and ten dollars, so we appreciate those donations and goes to.
The recommendation superintendent is to approve the donations, has superintendent a motion to do that? Colleen, is there a second?
Second.
That would be Lori. Discussion? Roll call votes, please.
Giles?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Schultz? Yes. Larson? Yes. Hennessy? Yes.
Yes. Um, anyone, uh, communication time, by the way. Anyone from the PTO here that would like to say anything? I saw one of our co-presidents around earlier. I'm sorry, FCA, that's the co-president. Foundation, Lori, anything?
Yes, I do. So on Thursday night, um, the foundation is excited to be awarding scholarships that evening. That evening will take place at the high school on Thursday, and they will be awarding scholarships, which they generate their money from the Bola Bash, and so they'll be giving that out like they give out when they give the, um, foundation grants out. Um, next year's bash day is already set for May eighth, so that will be happening. And then, um, graduation is Friday night, and the, um, foundation, um, buys and purchases and serves the cake to all of the graduates that attend to their families. So that's the foundation update.
Differenting the listeners. Board members, you have a chance to look at communications from the buildings. And it's time, if board members have any questions, comments you'd like to make regarding the going on in the district over the, uh, the end of the year.
I just wanna say, thank you for another great year from our teachers and staff and students. And, um, we have some who are departing, and, um, thank you to you for all that you've done for our district. I wanna say too, if there's any band or chorus parents out there, I really enjoyed the seventh or eighth grade choir in their tribute to Queen. Particularly, another one bites the ass. Really good. Thank you.
I have no report.
Excited, number one, Math Team State High School, pretty awesome. Congratulations.
Um, yeah, I know it's towards the end of the year, so I'm just sending vibes to all of you teachers and administrators who get through this next week. Um, my house is squirrely, so I'm sure those buildings are squirrely, but thank you for another good year of, um, really good support to the kids. Uh, we see you and we recognize that what you do every day is really important. We appreciate, um, your time and your effort and the love that you show to the kids. And we just wanted to say that we, we see that you give that, and, um, I personally very appreciate that.
I think it's pretty spectacular that the junior high jazz manual go visit the general assemblies in Springfield Capitol. I can imagine that the fraction of folks in the room tonight that have been inside the general assembly is fairly small, so that's pretty spectacular, we get to see that.
Um, a couple of things I would kinda, first of all, Lori mentioned the Math Team, winning state, spectacular. Um, they're, they're, I mean, I did math at high school, and they're doing things that I am amazed at. Boys track won their, I think their third section in a row. Last year, they go to state this weekend, last year they took second in state. We had them, I think around the same number, not getting one more this year than we did last year. So we're wishing them well this weekend, hope that they will do well. And then we are losing a long. I'll, I'll use the word friend, and certainly one of our key administrators is on a great job here. And Shannon, would you get, Laura? We have, uh. We appreciate your leadership at the high school and everything you've done there to help us just be so successful. And we're gonna miss you as you head south and become a superintendent. And, uh, we just have a little something here for you to take and put on your new mantle or on your new desk or somewhere at your numbers, and we wanna wish you all the best, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Tremendous job, Laxer, where you were shaking our high school. I want you to know, we appreciate it. Okay. Matt? Time we look forward to every month. Try to mix it. Financial.
Three is off, we plugged in here real quick. Normally my May financial report surprises me talking about how we just got a bunch of tax money and instead we're gonna talk about how no one's even had a bill for the property taxes. Jared, maybe some? Like I said, I'm gonna get an update on our property tax, uh, revenue situation that we have with, with Champaign, Kansas. Start off by saying that fifty-three percent of our total revenue comes from local property taxes. We've talked about that statistic several times, and, uh, of course, the, the majority of the rest of our revenue comes from state, uh, state funding and, and federal funding, but again, the majority there, uh, comes from local property taxes. And historically received about, you know, in, in May and June, about fifty-five percent of our annual, uh, property tax revenue from Champaign, Kansas. It's kind of coming off of a long period of low, uh, of our lowest cash flow, so it's been from like January through April. And we're kinda waiting for that to come in in May and June, and it has been consistent, certainly as long as I've been here, well before that, uh, historically. Normally because those bills are mailed, mailed out in May first. And, uh, so this year, the, the county claimed that there's a multiplier they're waiting on from the state. And now they have that, so they said originally that the, the bills are gonna be mailed on May twentieth, and, uh, latest article from these, that said, said May twenty-eighth. So we're a solid month late, which means we'll, uh, those bills will be due June twenty-eighth. We were, like I said, we normally receive two of the payments in May and June. Let's say, just say we won't see a main payment this year, and we've got a few slides to talk about. Kinda what the impact, the impact of that is for us with our cash flow. That kinda puts into perspective there for that period really, I see in December through April. Again, during that time, we're still seeing state funding coming in consistently, two payments each month. It's interesting that it's now flipped, where state funding was always the one that we're waiting on. And now, in this year anyway, uh, the proper tax revenue that we'll be waiting on. So you see the, uh, the lion's share of the revenue there in May and June, about eight point nine million dollars. We don't know how much of that we will be receiving this fiscal year, our fiscal year ends in June thirtieth. And, uh, of course, so cash flow in April, um, some financial report you have in front of you in your board packet, is usually the ugliest chunk we have. If we now get through May with, without the four point seven, four five million dollars, it won't look much better. So, uh, if we look at some specifics with the projections for our bills, our bank balance as of today, two point seven million dollars, uh, with four hundred and eight thousand dollars in outstanding checks as of today. The bill list that was approved earlier in the meeting, had a total of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand nine fifty-one. So again, we're just kind of dwindling down the balance there. May twenty-third, like I said before the previous slide, we'll receive that evidence-based, what EBM, should be EBF, evidence-based funding model, the state fund, uh, the state funding payment, uh, four fifty-one. And then we'll get through May thirtieth payroll, uh, at the most throughout this year, it's been six hundred thousand every two weeks, so that's the number I use just to be conservative, along with its related, uh, payroll accounts payable, so paying offline, it's paying all the vendors for the payroll-related accounts payable. So by the end of May, we'll have made six hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, and again, that would otherwise be, that plus four point seven million dollars, quite a bit of difference. If we look into June, then we get that, uh, evidence-based funding state payment, June twelfth. And then we get into another payroll, it happens to be in early this year. It's, it's June fourteenth, since that's a Friday, and again, the associated payroll AP for that. So that shows we'll make it through June fifteenth payroll. Then we get that additional state payment, not additional, but the planned state payment, the final one for the fiscal year toward the end of June. And then we get to that bill list, June twenty-fourth, uh, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. That will be, it's probably a high number compared to what it's going to be, but again, just in the interest of being conservative. That's the point where we go negative, I mean, maybe nothing else, but that's when we run out of money, so it's good, again. At that point, if we wouldn't have received any property tax revenue, we're almost nine million dollars that we didn't receive. I don't know of any public school district that can operate, that can not operate on, you know, and not receive those, those types of things. That's nothing anybody can plan for, um, that's been consistent money for decades. And, uh, it'll, it'll show up still, it'll show up probably in July, next, next fiscal year. But what that means in terms of trying to pay bills essentially, uh, we get into the discussion of tax anticipation warrants. And I excited the school code portion of, uh, that discusses tax anticipation warrants. It's simply, it's essentially funds that you can receive locally in lieu, from banks, in, in lieu of receiving those private tax payments. And then you, with a low interest rate, short-term, uh, maturity date, usually a month or two. And then when you receive the tax money, uh, then you pay the, those warrants back. You can, you can, I guess, borrow, uh, up to eighty-five percent of the total amount you levy. That would be more than enough, of course, to pay those, those, the bills that will have coming around the corner. Make point two, they would be provided from the local banks, so usually school districts get multiple quotes from banks. Make, uh, point two, they would be provided from a local bank, so usually school districts get multiple quotes from banks. Of course, stay local and, uh, low, low rate.
How quickly can you turn that around?
I'm sorry?
How quickly can you get that?
Can we get?
I mean, do they get it next day or?
Uh, I think it's usually been a week process, so we'll get into that a little bit here at the next vote one. And speaking with, of course, this is, it's never been anything we've ever talked about, we've never had to. And in talking with Chapman and Cutler are asserting on these, these types of topics. Um, a parameters resolution can be approved by the board in a special meeting the first week of June. So that would allow, would, uh, it would designate, um, school district administration, lending myself, and then the board president to, uh, issue those warrants as needed throughout the rest of the month, within parameters, hence the name parameters resolution. So up to X dollar amount, up to X percentage, you know, interest rate, and then X maturity date as well. So kind of those three main factors that would be written within that parameters resolution, that would give us some, uh, parameters to work within if you were to discuss or think. And then, like I said, pay that the next day, or the next month, rather. The latest I've heard from the county would be that as soon as they're planning, they, they get money, they're going to try to get that right back out to us. We always receive that in direct deposit, so, you know, here's hoping that, that continues. But we don't know the, the amount and the land, which is the biggest, biggest information we need to pay bills. So, uh, again, very unusual, of course, everybody in the room that, that owns a property hasn't seen those bills yet, and, and, you know, so here's, here's why. And it's, it's been covered quite a bit in this, in the last few weeks, so none of this is surprising, but, uh, it does have a huge impact on public school districts and other taxing bodies.
It's, it's not a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
So I'm here to tell you, it's not, it's not realistic transactions, including my own. So what was the multiplier, was it?
It was one point zero zero, like, the last fifteen years.
So the, the word for the county was state didn't give us a multiplier.
Right. Other counties received it.
But other counties received their multipliers. Because we're the only county known that has.
I've talked to Patrick Cutler, he's in May, they're on the same vote.
What? So, you just said this, I'm going to ask it again, because I wanted to answer that you're kicking me, but. The clerk's office has to give it, so they had given you no, I mean, could we slip into July and be in the same vote? Could we slip into August and be in the same vote, I mean?
July, maybe, August, unlikely, even July, I'd like to think unlikely. I mean, now this is the fourth, it becomes a question again. Now that we keep pushing back on those bills, we finally mail out.
Yeah, another problem is information keeps changing, right? As of a week ago, you were told they were going to be mailed after that, and they swore by it.
Or three days later, or four days later.
Four days later, they changed it. But I think the point is, once the bills get mailed, cash will start to flow in, because there are some people who pay their taxes right away.